Town Meeting Tonight, Town Meeting Tonight, Come to the Old Town Hall.
Hey, Cryer, what's the question tonight?
Yeah, what's the question?
Will the machine dominate man?
Will the machine dominate man?
The machine does dominate man.
Sure, my husband hasn't had a job for a year.
Replaced by a machine.
No, the machine has improved living standards. The machine has given us leisure.
Right, too much leisure.
Down with the machine!
No, just use it wisely.
That's the thing to do.
And so the opinions rise and clash. That is why America's Town Meeting of the Air invites you to Historic Town Hall in New York City, to hear eminent authorities present their views on this perplexing problem. I now present to you our moderator, Mr. George V. Denny Jr., founder and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air, Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. You would really be surprised if you knew how many of the meetings on this program were suggested by members of the radio audience. Tonight we have another. Will the machine dominate man? You can phrase the question almost any way you like, but the problem created by the development of the machine during the past quarter of a century is one of the most elusive and contentious ones we face. It is an economic and social problem, highly individual and human. How are we going to adjust ourselves to a mechanized age economically, socially, and culturally? To clarify some of these questions, we've invited Mr. Herman H. Lind of Cleveland, Ohio, a noted engineer and general manager of the National Machine Tool Builders Association, who believes that the machine can be our best help in making a better world; Mr. Ralph Bossode, who holds the distinction of not only advocating the theory for the domestication of the machine, but in putting this theory in practice in his interesting School of Living in Suffolk, New York; and who is also the author of many books on the machine age; and Professor Walter Rautenstrout, professor of industrial engineering at Columbia University for the past thirty years; and as a representative of our radio audience, the man who first suggested this program, Mr. Frank Finney, an advertising man of New York City. And now we're going to hear first from Mr. Herman H. Lind, engineer of Cleveland, Ohio, Mr. Lind.
Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen, as an approach to the question whether this machine will dominate man, let us enumerate some of the outstanding contributions the machine has made for man's use and enjoyment. Twenty-five million automobiles, with nearly a million miles of improved roads for travel; two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles of railroads; twenty-one million homes wired for electricity; seventeen-and-a-half-million telephones; more than a million tractors, and all kinds of other farm equipment; ten-and-a-half-million washing machines; more than ten-million vacuum cleaners; twenty-two-and-a-half-million radios; nearly nine-million electric refrigerators; an ever-expanding number of the people operate or have at their command daily the means of transportation, of communication, of laborating devices, of comforts that were practically unknown a short time ago as sixty years. Had an Aladdin carrying through the streets of New York in eighteen-seventy-five brought out of the lighted circle a mere glimpse of the comforts and enjoyments, the added leisure, the same ease of communication and of travel in this year, nineteen-thirty-six, what a spectacle that would have been? Yet today we take for granted the thousand-and-one modern conveniences and comforts for the shop, the farm, the office, and the home. Was the mere introduction of machinery and power the motivating force back of this revolutionary advance? Only in part. Inventions of themselves are useful only as they are put to work, and as their benefits are extended to many individuals. There are other factors that make it possible. For the great inventions of the last century progressively to transform our world, among them are: our system of government that guarantees to each citizen freedom of opportunity and equal privilege; business enterprise, which seeks always to profit by the most efficient methods to produce all the goods the market will absorb; the striving of every family to secure to itself through work and effort as much worldly goods and comforts as any other family possesses. These were the conditions that laid the groundwork for the most rapid advance in industrial development, machine civilization, if you will, and its accompaniment of higher living standards for more people than ever before known in history. For most of the time since the Civil War, you will recall that immigration was unrestricted; railroads were extended across the continent, opening new territories for settlement; and new industry using machine production methods were born in the effort to keep pace with the increase and flow of our population. Let us glance at the figures of the United States Bureau Census. In the period from eighteen-seventy to nineteen-thirty, our population multiplied by three, while the number of gainfully employed, either at work for themselves or in the employ of others, multiplied by almost four. The difference was actually at twenty-two percent pure gain for employment. In addition, at the end of the thirty-year period from eighteen-ninety-nine to nineteen-thirty, that's as far back as we have the figures, the wage earners' income about thirty-nine percent more goods, with a bonus in the form of great improvement in quality and a far greater variety of goods from which to choose. A study of the Bureau of Labor Statistics just completed discloses the interesting fact that in the month of December nineteen-thirty-five, as we emerged from the Depression, ten of the newest, the most highly mechanized industries, employed ninety-four-and-six-tenths percent of the workers serving those industries in nineteen-twenty-nine. For industry as a whole, including these ten highly mechanized groups, the index of employment stands at eighty-four-and-one-tenth percent of nineteen-twenty-nine. Here is convincing proof that the less highly mechanized industries are lagging behind the rest in opening for jobs. Probably the best example of mechanization is the automotive industry. Automobile manufacturers spent a large amount of their surplus in the depths of the Depression to install new machinery to make a better product at lower cost in the hope of finding a wider market. Because all of their foresight and courage, they are today employing more men than in nineteen-twenty-nine, are building a better product, and are giving more value for the money paid for a new car. Moreover, the greater variety and quantity of materials going into each automobile have created increased employment in the supply industries that furnish raw materials, the component parts, the accessories, and above all, the services. It has been reliably estimated that the people of this country who derive their livelihood directly and indirectly from the automobile number five-million-and-sixty-five-thousand, or twelve percent of the total gainfully employed. And now let us look at one of the less mechanized groups, the home-building industry. In this industry, a large proportion of the work is done at the site of construction and is still done by hand. As a result, costs remained so high that the building of homes began to fall off in the summer of nineteen-twenty-six, preceding by almost two years the Depression for other industries. Nor has the recovery in this industry since nineteen-thirty-four and consequent reemployment of its labor measured anywhere near that which has taken place since nineteen-thirty-four in the mechanized industries. This example leads me to suggest that in looking for the cause of unemployment, a comprehensive and frank study be made of those industries where unemployment is known to exist; also that a comparison be made of the technique of operation, relative costs, and employment in such industries with those of the automotive and other highly mechanized industries. Occasionally, some well-meaning person expresses a fear that the machine eventually will dominate man, but I wonder just what it is they have in mind. Would they give up our agricultural machinery that has so lightened the toil of the farmer? Or our transportation machinery and better roadways that make us all neighbors? Or our telephone, radios, and similar conveniences? Perhaps they have in mind the kind of a production system so amusingly dramatized by Charlie Chaplin's caricature of modern times. It is true that in the operation of some machines that replace handwork, the motions of the operator must be timed to the rhythm of the machine. All of our motions always have had to correspond with the task at hand, whether the activity be that of rowing a boat, tramping after a team of horses in the field, or arranging a radio program. Man has always established rhythm in his work, to keep pace in some manner either with animals, with other men, with the seasons of the year, or with whatever elements affected his personal productive ability. The introduction of machinery has not changed that. If by domination of the machine is meant that the machine economy will dominate man to his destruction, we know that it does not so dominate now. We know that the machine age is relatively new, that it has opened many doors to better methods of gaining a livelihood for men who must work for what they have. We know that it has increased leisure for learning and for cultural advancement. Measured in terms of attendance at secondary and normal schools, colleges, we find an increase from less than one million students in nineteen-hundred to nearly seven millions in nineteen-thirty-two, with a vast increase in the number of books, periodicals, and libraries made accessible to all the people. The entire history of our country has been one of man's domination of his environment through the use of the machine, and that our hope lies in greater use of machinery for production of more and more goods. I want to repeat that I for one believe that the advance that the world has made since the middle of the nineteenth century has been due to the governmental guarantees of freedom that reserves to the individual the right to make the widest use of his powers of invention, his genius for organization, his ability and willingness to work for his own advancement. It seems to me that the first requisite for continued advance is the preservation of that principle of freedom of opportunity. A second requisite is a philosophy of plenty which will lead us away from the fear of overproduction to the ideal of unrestricted production of goods and an ever-increasing standard of living for everyone. If we will accept these two principles and look upon the machine as a lever by which the entire world can be lifted to a higher plane of comfortable living and culture, we have every right to expect further extension of the blessings of the machine age, which up to this time has brought about the elimination of much human drudgery, the reduction of costs which permit more people to enjoy the comforts that fashion a better and happier life, a shorter working day, swift and commodious travel over long distances, the lightening of labor for men and women in the field, the factory and the home, and for all who work, new and easier ways of earning their livelihood.
Thank you, Mr. Lind. And now I take pleasure in presenting our second speaker, Mr. Ralph Bossode, founder of the School of Living of Suffolk, New York. Mr. Bossode.
The question of whether the machine will dominate man has already been answered by the history of the past one hundred years. Man is already dominated by machines. I offer the history, not only of the great industrial nations like the United States, but the history of the remotest regions of the world itself as proof of this statement. World history, ever since England made itself into the workshop of the world, is merely a record of the ruthless efforts of the great industrial nations in promoting their manufacturing industries. War after war has been waged in order to increase the wealth of the great industrial powers. India was crushed, and India's ancient prosperity destroyed in order to furnish a market for the products of the textile machines of Lancashire. Germany precipitated the World War in order to secure what she thought her place in the sun of industrial progress. In this country, a bitter civil war was waged between the industrial north and the agricultural south, and the tariff walls preserved for the benefit of northern mills and northern factories. The machine, as we use it now, dominates man politically. Wars and revolutions will be the future fruits, as they have been the fruits in the past of that domination, but it also dominates him economically and financially. The bitter struggle between labor and capital, the wholesale unemployment with which every industrial nation is confronted, booms and panics, prosperity and depressions, all are the fruits of machine domination. As machines have dominated us more and more, depressions have become worse and worse. We build bigger and better machines, we get bigger and better depressions. The present depression has shaken the world to its foundations. The next one, for which we are now preparing by building still more machines, may be so severe as to disrupt the social fabric and plunge us into mob rule and revolution. But the machine does not dominate us only politically and economically, it dominates us spiritually and morally. If you want a graphic demonstration of the truth of this statement, go to any great factory and see how truly Charlie Chaplin's latest film reflects man's domination by the machine. To me, that picture was not funny. I have visited too many of the insane hospitals we are erecting all over the country for the victims of this machine-dominated civilization. It may be funny to watch Chaplin going crazy, dancing to the tempo of the machines on the assembly lines in his factory, but it isn't funny to know that people everywhere are in larger and larger numbers, going mad, dancing to the same tempo. Psychiatrists are unable to build hospitals for the insane fast enough. In spite of the wonders of modern medicine, degenerative diseases like cancer and diabetes are increasing steadily. If I made these statements on my own responsibility, you might well say that they were only the opinions of an eccentric layman, looking back longingly to some nonexistent golden past. But I am merely repeating what had been recently said by Alexis Carrel, one of the world's greatest biologists, a scientist who won the Nobel Prize. Carrel says that the domination of man by industrial machinery is responsible for the increase of insanity and feeble-mindedness. For the spread of degenerative diseases, for the decline of man's spiritual, moral, and artistic life, man, he says, cannot adjust himself to an industrial civilization. We are beginning to realize, he says, the weakness of our civilization. Those countries that have blindly adopted the spirit and techniques of industrial civilization, Russia as well as England, France, and Germany, are exposed to the same dangers as the United States. Humanity's attention must turn from the machines and the world of inanimate matter to the body and soul of man. My book, he says, is written for all those who are bold enough to understand the necessity not only of mental, political, and social changes, but of the overthrow of industrial civilization. The question now is, what shall we do about it? Shall we do as the socialists, the communists, the technocrats, the New Dealers wish us to do? Reorganize and replan all of society, of government, of human life, to fit the industrial world? Or shall we put the machine in its proper place? All the ideals of the craft and agrarian civilization which prevailed when this nation was founded, independence, self-reliance, thrift, freedom, are being scrapped by the engineers of the New Deal in Washington and the engineers of communism in Russia. The new ideals are regulation, centralization, control, planning, all in the interest of producing a prosperous industrial state. These new ideals spell the end of man's aspiration for a free state. They involve renouncing the imperfect free state we enjoy at present in favor of the establishment of a servile state in which engineers and public officials, instead of financiers and businessmen, will order the people around. I want neither the present system of machine domination for the benefit of finance capitalism, nor the proposed system of machine domination for the benefit of an army of public officials. To me, man must come first, machinery second. But we have been told that without mass production, without factory products, without a planned industrial society, man would have to return to the poverty of primitive and agricultural civilizations. Let me make my reply to this assertion as uncompromising as I can. These assertions are simply not true. Because it is more economical to manufacture steel rails in a great mill than to try to make them in a blacksmith shop; because it is more economical to manufacture electric light bulbs in a large factory than to try and make them one by one for our own use; because it is more economical to produce automobiles in Detroit than to try and make them individually all over the country, it is assumed that it is more economical to produce everything in a factory than to produce anything on a small scale for our own use. But the use of machinery and great factories to produce everything is not genuinely economic. On the contrary, careful studies made over a period of many years indicate that in the case of two-thirds of the products which the average family consumes, it costs more in labor and in raw materials to manufacture them in large factories than to produce them on a small scale in neighborhood shops or even within the four walls of the home. Because there is a gain in the factory production of one-third of the things which we consume, we are blind to the fact that there is a loss in the factory production of two-thirds of the things which we consume. But you may ask, isn't it more efficient to grind flour in a great mill in Minneapolis than in a small mill in Virginia? I have time for only one illustration of how dangerous it is to assume that mass production is always more efficient than home production. Let us take the humble can of baked beans which millions buy daily. Now it is perfectly true that it costs the country, the cannery, less to make them than it costs to make them at home, but no cannery can ever sell them to you at what it costs to make them. You have to pay not only for the beans and the baking, but for the canning, for the cases in which they are shipped, for the freight to transport them, for the stores and warehouses in which they are distributed. And a careful test, which I have made over and over again, shows that it is possible to produce them for your own use in your own home at one-third of the cost of buying them factory-made. The people of the industrialized nations have made a great mistake in permitting machinery to dominate their lives, in subordinating spiritual and artistic values to industrial progress, in making quantity rather than quality at which to aim. They have made one of the very great mistakes of human history. Unless they are willing to undo this mistake, to put the machine in its proper place, to use it mainly as a domestic tool to be used when needed and laid aside when not, unless they make the home more important in their lives than the operation of factories and mills, unless they leave their overdeveloped industrial cities and return to country life, they will decay and degenerate, and the great civilizations of which they are so proud decay and degenerate with them.
Thank you, Mr. Bossode. Well now, there are two viewpoints on this question. Well, there's still a third, and perhaps a fourth. The third we're going to have as our speaker, Professor Walter Rautenstrout, professor of industrial engineering at Columbia University. And I'll take pleasure in presenting Professor Rautenstrout.
The machine is the symbol of the physical power of modern civilization. By the use of machinery, man applies artificially-generated energy to tilling the soil, reaping the harvests, manufacturing goods, and building roads and houses. The machine enables modern man to utilize the energy and materials of his environment more abundantly and more efficiently. Can it be possible that the means for obtaining the material things of life in ever-increasing abundance will also become the means by which civilization will decline? Can an inert mass of material dominate man? It seems stupid even to suggest that it can. The modern surgeon works with many more instruments and devices than did his predecessor of a generation ago. The life of man is accordingly lengthened, and his suffering is greatly relieved. Surely man is not dominated by these devices. The modern farmer can now plow the fields, plant crops, and reap harvests with only a fraction of the physical effort his forebears exerted. The machine has permitted man to use the power of fuels instead of his own muscular energy, and thus to reap more abundant harvests from the soil. Does the machinery of agriculture dominate man when it increases his harvests manyfold? When the machine digs into the depths of the earth and brings forth metals? When these metals are wrought into thousands of intricate and useful forms by the energy of fuels and the use of machines? When in hundreds of thousands of ways the machine is doing for man what man could never do by his own energy? Can we say that the machine is dominating man? Did some of the machinery of production in nineteen-twenty-nine, as in earlier times of Depression, suddenly decide to dominate man and cease its labors for several years? Were millions of workmen driven from employment and hunger and want because the machine would no longer respond to their direction? Was it because of the machine, which is capable of providing man with the goods and services for a more abundant life, or because of the forces which separate him from the machine? Is it the machine, or is it these forces which are dominating man? As we review the development of the processes of civilization, we do observe the fact that with the increase in machinery, there are ever-increasing numbers and depths of depression. But events which occur at the same time are not necessarily cause and effect. Other coincident events may have their effects and obscure the real causal relationships. Man has altered the ways of life in other respects than by the introduction of machinery and the utilization of power. As machines were being built and used in ever-increasing numbers, man was also introducing new methods for establishing claims to the goods which the machine produced. For example, the total national income distributed in nineteen-thirty-two was equal to that distributed in nineteen-seventeen, approximately forty-eight billions of dollars. But while in nineteen-seventeen, the producers and the overhead groups shared equally in the national income, in nineteen-thirty-two, the overhead group received two dollars and thirty cents for every dollar paid the producers. Thus during the short period of fifteen years, the overhead on the national plant increased from one-hundred percent on production to two-hundred-and-thirty percent. The producers include all those who are engaged in manufacture, agriculture, mining, transportation, and building construction, from the presidents to the janitors. The overhead group includes all those employed in the national state and local governments, in finance and trade, in professional services, and the property owners who receive interest, dividends, rents, and royalties. The number of producers in nineteen-seventeen was twenty-four million; in nineteen-thirty-two, seventeen million. The overhead group numbered fourteen million in nineteen-seventeen and sixteen million in nineteen-thirty-two. Thus we find during this short period of time, not only did the use of machinery and power increase, but also there was a great change in the numbers of people employed in production compared to those in the overhead services, and the relative claims of the producers and the overhead group to the goods produced was materially changed. The machine of itself has no power to dominate man. If man is dominated by the processes of modern civilization, it will be because of his lack of intelligence and the use of the machine. An early American statesman addressing himself to the future development of this nation said, "He had no fear of the outcome of the venture in democracy so long as the people remained on the soil." What Thomas Jefferson meant with this statement was that our future would be secure so long as the people dealt with the elemental facts of life.
Professor Rautenstrout, I'm sorry to interrupt at this time, but other stations are joining us now. This program is coming to you from Town Hall, New York.
...of the elemental forces which condition the life and prosperity of business enterprise. We see only the physical change, the machine. We do not see the great changes wrought in the ways of establishing claims to the goods produced. We fail to understand why the machine is not working and to relieve mankind from the pressing burden of physical want. Time will not permit of a complete answer to the question, why the machine with its great promise of the abundant life is not now working toward that end. We can refer briefly to only a few basic factors in the production of goods by machines. Let us assume that a certain factory produces five-million dollars' worth of shoes annually. Why do we say that the quantity of shoes... Why do we say that the quantity of shoes produced is worth five million dollars? Why not one million or ten million? Because during the time of production there were distributed claims to the shoes in the form of money to the total amount of five million dollars. Thus, we find a basic equation in our economy is value of goods produced equals claims to goods produced. If all the claims were presented at the warehouse during the year and the shoes withdrawn for use, then we could say that consumption balances production. When some of the claims are not presented at the warehouse, we say that they are being saved. What usually happens to the saved claims? In essence, the saver becomes an investor, and he says to the producer of capital goods, plants and machinery, "If you will build me some machinery and buildings, I will let you have these saved claims so that you can get your shoes at the warehouse." Thus, the producer of capital goods obtains his claims to consumption goods. Prior to the beginning of the depression, about one-third of our production was in capital goods. When, however, the saver no longer invests, then the capital goods producer has no means for obtaining claims to consumption goods. He becomes unemployed. The producer of consumption goods finds that many of his products remain in the warehouse. He says he has overproduced. The wage earners in consumption goods factories are now laid off because of overproduction. Thus, we observe the operation of some of the forces which separate men from machines. Apparently, it is not the machine which is dominating man, but rather those forces which separate him from the machine and from the goods which the machine produces. Let us look again at the basic equation. Value of goods produced equals claims to goods produced. And examine the ways in which the claims to the goods produced by the machine originate. These claims are of two kinds: those which are issued in direct proportion to the rise and fall of production, such as the total wages paid to labor during a given time period, and those which are issued in fixed amounts during a given time period without regard to the rise and fall in production, such as interest on mortgages and rents. During the past generation, while machines have been built and used in ever-increasing numbers, we have also been multiplying the amount of the fixed claims to the goods produced by the machine. In 1880, the base for determining such claims was three thirteen billions of dollars; in 1929, two hundred billions of dollars. Thus, the interest charges on all debts constitute claims to the goods produced by the machine. In fact, business enterprise has come to be regarded by many as the process by which such fixed claims are created and dealt with, and a successful businessman is one who accumulates a maximum of such fixed claims to the goods produced by the machine. We have removed ourselves so far from the elemental facts of life against which Thomas Jefferson warned us, that we fail to comprehend the essential nature of our economy and particularly the relations between income and production. Therefore, we endeavor to bring about the issuance of claims to goods apart from the productive process by which such goods are created. This may be observed in the many popular clamors for bonus payments, pensions of various sorts and descriptions, loans and credit expansions, and in the numerous ways in which claims to goods are being issued, wholly independent of the rate at which the machine is producing the goods. It is not the machine which is dominating man, but rather his failure to gear the machine to a workable business process, a process which will equate the goods produced and the claims to such goods in ways which will assure their consumption and use. The machine has altered the business process in other important ways. We find one great change the machine has wrought is the separation of the processes of civilization into great specialized functional groups. Mass production factories, steam taller fleets, transcontinental railways, credit agencies, and many other institutions. As each of these groups spread their special influences in our national life, we made but feeble attempts to integrate their operation into a coordinated, unified process. We therefore failed to realize that the same machine which produced an abundance of goods at the same time demanded a fundamental change in the organization and management of the national plant in order that it might be used effectively. This demand was met by private enterprise with the result that the whole structure of organization and the methods of management experienced complete and substantial changes. No such changes have occurred in the operation of the national plant. Neither the organization nor the methods of management demanded by the machine have been recognized, much less applied. The tools are not in the hands of those who can use them. The objectives and purposes of civilization have become confused, while the forces of the business process go on with ever-increasing acceleration. Will the machine dominate man? No. Will the machine open the gateway to a field of plenty for all? Yes, provided man will use his demonstrated intelligence in science, engineering, and the arts. The beginnings of social change are always confusing and dominated by blind resistance to that which is not understood. But the spirit of man will not be subdued. He will learn to use the machine not only for the development of a higher plane of civilization, but also to create a more stable pattern of living, a firmer foundation for a great national culture rich in the material wealth of things and abundant in the spiritual forces of life.
Thank you, Professor Rautenstrout. Back in November of last year, after one of our programs, we received a very interesting letter from Mr. Finney, an advertising agent in New York City, a letter suggesting this program. Well, he's been after us and a great many others have been after us to have a program of this kind. His letter was so constructively useful that when we established the precedent of bringing radio representatives to New York, we thought, why not take this man from New York and bring him to our program and let the country hear what this advertising agent had to say about the question, "Will the machine dominate man?" The substance of that letter, Mr. Finney is going to read to us tonight. I'm very happy to present at this time the representative of our radio audience, Mr. Frank Finney of New York. Mr. Finney.
Because of the labor-saving machine, seventy-five workers can produce as much today as one hundred did in 1929. Because of the labor-saving machine, the average number of workers in factories has been reduced to forty workers per factory. Because of the labor-saving machine, the average number of workers on farms has been reduced to one and one-half workers per farm. This is the reason why we have eleven million workers out of a job and twenty-two million disheartened souls on relief. There is plenty of work in this country for everybody if we would give less of it to labor-saving machines and more of it to human hands. One authority says that if we were an all-hand nation, there would be fifty jobs for every worker in this country. Here is an example of the jobs that could be created in a small industry like the business machine industry. If all business machines were abolished, such as adding calculating, billing, and tabulating machines, one million white-collar workers could be put back to work. Who would be hurt by this action? Only thirteen thousand workers who make all these machines. And the concerns who use them would lose a tiny bit of their profits. It would not raise prices. What would happen if the labor-saving machine was curtailed in the larger industry? Why, we'd have to import labor to do all the work. For fifty years, this country has been hell-bent on building machines to destroy jobs. If we keep up this grim destruction of jobs, there will soon be little work for anybody to do. No less an authority than Henry Ford himself predicts that automobiles will be made entirely by machine. I am not here to argue that the labor-saving machine is the cause of the depression. I am only here to contend that enough work can be taken away from labor-saving machines to provide eleven million jobs and thus wipe out unemployment and the colossal waste of the dough and restore courage, hope, and happiness to twenty-two million suffering hearts. With what a superior air of learning and pity the intelligentsia looks down on me for daring to suggest the curtailment of the labor-saving machine. Their reverence for the machine and that holy-word progress inspired by insidious machine propaganda is amusing to anyone who understands the power of propaganda. But the only plan these good people have for creating eleven million jobs is that of watchful waiting and dumb spending until prosperity returns. This might be all right if our unemployed multitudes can suffer and starve long enough. However, I am not here... I am not against the machine. I am hardly in favor of the invention and use of machines that create jobs, such as the typewriter, the telephone, and the automobile. But I am against overdoing the use of labor-saving machines, such as textile machines, farm machinery, and automatic production, for they destroy jobs and that destroys consumer demand. Forty years ago, most of the railroads in this country were in the hands of a receiver. The Interstate Commerce Commission brought order out of chaos in the railroad field. In like manner, a commission on labor-saving machines could curtail these machines here and there, where the manufacturer's profit would stand hand-labor, and thus, without increasing prices or doing much harm to anybody, we could wipe out unemployment. We are willing to limit farm production. Why are we unwilling to limit our worst enemy, the labor-saving machine? Since nearly every grand-diloquent theory down in Washington has failed, since the unemployment menace is growing worse every day, and since we may be facing national bankruptcy or revolution, why not try something practical? The curtailment of the labor-saving machine.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Well, there are four points of view for us. Now, we begin the question period. Please rise and state the person to whom your question is directed. Limit your question to twenty-five words. And I suggest that you write your question out so that we'll save time. The man right down here on the third row. Question, please. Good gracious, Mr. Finney. First man on the spot.
If machines cause unemployment, therefore, countries that do not have machines would be very prosperous. How about China, India, and Australia?
What about those countries that don't have so many machines, Mr. Finney?
I'm not here to discuss what caused the depression or what China's doing and other countries. All I'm trying to put over is the idea that we need eleven million jobs, and the method that I'm proposing will produce eleven million natural jobs.
Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Bossode to answer that same question. Mr. Bossode, what do you think about this matter of the backward countries? Why don't they have more prosperity if they don't have machines?
If you read the histories of India before England destroyed the textile industries, or rather, the textile crafts of India, you will find that it was the most prosperous nation in the world. If you'll go back to the history of China before the industrial nations came into China, you will find that China was one of the most civilized and most prosperous nations of the world. You can't judge or make a comparison of India or China with England or the United States without taking into consideration what the industrialized nations have done to them.
Thank you.
Question to Mr. Bardoty.
Mr. Bossode.
Bossode.
Yes, all right.
Granted, the incessant monotony of machine tending is causing many nervous disorders. Has not the long hours got something to do with that? The great electrical wizard, Charles Steinmet, has prophesied that within the next century, the hours for labor will be four hours a day. Won't that rectify that situation?
Yes, Mr. Bossode.
If the reduction in the number of hours would solve this problem, then the fact that we have been reducing the number of hours year after year should have already reduced the problem. As a matter of fact, in spite of the reduction in the number of hours which we work, the nervous breakdowns are constantly increasing.
Yes, thank you. Question back there.
Mr. Rochhour.
To who?
Mr. Rochhour.
Professor Rautenstrout?
Isn't it not true that machines are labor-saving devices and that our great president Franklin D. Roosevelt will lead the world in adjusting capital, labor, and machinery in the coming four years?
That's a political question, sir. Well, what about adjusting capital, labor, and machinery to solve our ills?
Well, the particular question is a political question which is beyond the scope of this subject.
Well, we rule out the political part, but go ahead and discuss the economic part.
Well, the economic part can be only discussed in terms of the intelligence man uses in adjusting the machine to the processes of civilization.
Thank you. Right down here. Just a minute.
I would like to ask Mr. Lynn the question.
Mr. Lynn. Yes?
Mr. Lynn, what do you think about the advisability of doing away with machines in business offices?
What about doing away with machines in business offices?
Well, you often notice that when people want to do away with machines, they want to do away with the machines that they're not particularly interested in. If we are interested in advertising, for instance, we want our typewriters and our telephones. Now, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, there are tremendously more people employed in offices now in proportion to the population than there were years ago. And we had a beautiful illustration of the necessity of more machinery in the offices here about four weeks ago when the Department of Agriculture wanted some six or seven or eight weeks to get out a very simple statement. That kind of statements, we need right away. We're getting ever-so-much more statistics and good figures today by use of machines in offices, calculating machines and that sort of thing. And if anything, we need more of them, not less of them, in my judgment.
Mr. Lynn. Here's a question written, handed in to you. Don't you think that the newly-invented machine cotton picker will throw two-thirds of the two million cotton palm hands out of work?
That is a very interesting question, and I for one hope that the new cotton picker or some cotton picker works out successfully. I wouldn't be surprised if that would have much the same result, that the invention of the spinner and the loom had in England in making England a really great nation, industrial nation, doing a lot of things for them. And in our own case, the invention of Eli Whitney, the cotton gin, did more for the development of the growing of cotton in this country, expanded the use of cotton, than almost anything you can imagine.[1642.97] uh, than, uh, almost anything you can imagine. I'm hopeful that this, uh, machine, it takes time for these to develop practically and become, uh, get to general use. I hope that, uh, the day may be speeded, that that will come along, and it might be the answer to putting many more acres of, of, uh, land to production of cotton in the South and expanding the use of cotton. They're experimenting with it in roads now.
Now, Mr. Lin, just before this meeting began, I was told that Mr. John Russ, the man who invented this machine and who happens to be in New York today, was going to be here tonight to, uh, hear what we had to say about this problem, what you had to say, rather. Is he in the audience, Mr. Russ? Is he here? Mr. Russ, what do you think about all this? Here's the man that invented the machine. Mr. Russ, go ahead.
Well, I, uh, in the beginning, I want to say that I didn't come here to teach, but to learn. I, well, we, we've figured out the machine all right. It'll pick the cotton, and eventually, it will crowd out probably two-thirds of the people from the cotton-growing land. But, uh, in doing that, in causing certain unemployment, is the, a good share of that unemployment will be women and children. It shouldn't be in the cotton field in the first place, though it'd give the kids of the South a chance to go to school to pick cotton, like I had to do when I was a kid. Uh, as for the, uh, as for the solution, uh, of the, uh, machine problem, well, that, uh, I have some ideas, which I, I don't want to burden you with. But I am very much interested in, in what has been said here tonight, and in particular, in the people who are favoring the machine and who are interested in seeing, uh, the, uh, society make, adjust itself to our technological development, rather than trying to go back to the hand methods.
Well, we're very glad you came. And thank you very much for your comments. The gentleman right here.
If employers would give the human individual that's wait for them, Professor Rautenstrout.
Professor Rautenstrout. Yes, sir.
If employers would give the human individual that's wait for them five minutes rest each hour, do you think that would increase their physical and mental stability?
It would. I hear the man's been trying to add his question sometime. Press the Rautenstrout again.
Since it isn't, will the machine dominate man? But, since the machines are owned by people who are not dominated, but own and dominate the machines, that is the capitalist class, is it not true that these people, that is the capitalist class, use these machines to exploit the workers to the detriment of society?
All right, sir. Right, sir. The, uh, problem is, uh, rather, the question is rather involved one, and I think that, uh, instead of discussing it in terms of classes of people, we should discuss it in terms of the characteristics of this, uh, machine economy. Our economy has been so built up on, uh, a basis of distributing claims to goods, fixed claims that have no relation to production, and it is that system which is, uh, destroying the usefulness of the machine in society.
Thank you. Uh, here's a question. I have a handful of written questions, and we can't possibly take them all, but I'm going to take some written and some verbal before we, before our time is up. So, Mr. Lin. Mr. Lin, has the introduction of machinery since nineteen twenty-eight increased employment opportunity for the American citizen?
Yes, indeed. Uh, every time machines come in, they produce something. A man only puts machines in, he only invents things because he figures there's a market for a product. He puts his, uh, money on producing a product that people will want. He usually finds that they do want it. When they want more of it, it, uh, more of it is built, it demands more machinery, reduces the prices, and brings around still more. It's the regular merry-go-round.
Uh, thank you. Now, here's a question for Mr. Borsody. Mr. Borsody, with only three percent of our population making over twenty-five dollars a week, where do you think they're going to get money to return to the country and build little factories near their homes to make their own needs?
I don't know where those figures came from, but I do know this, that if the millions of dollars that are spent every day merely to keep people in idleness were used for the purpose of furnishing them with land and with equipment, for the purpose of producing things for their own use, that millions of people who are now unemployed would be employed.
Thank you, sir. Night on the back row there, yes?
A question for Mr. Lin.
Mr. Lin.
Uh, Mr. Lin, do you think that with machines working as they are and having the effects they have, that the thirty-hour week would be helpful from both your angle and the angle of all the others concerned? Thirty-hour week.
I, I think the thirty-hour week or any other hours a week will be all right, when all the people have all the products they want. Not before.
Well, that same question has been handed in here for Professor Rautenstrout. Would you speak to that question, Professor Rautenstrout? Does the displacement of labor today caused by the machine justify the universal acceptance of the thirty-hour week without the reduction in weekly wage?
Well, that's a very disputed, uh, point. I, uh, see no reason why people should, uh, not work thirty hours a week. I work more than thirty hours a week. I work sometimes fifty hours a week, sixty hours a week. The main point is to have people working with joy and pleasure in their work. And when our civilization is so organized that each man will find that he can express himself, that he is not, uh, under restrictions, that he is not frustrated, then he will have that joy which will enable him to work with ease and with pleasure. Thirty hours, forty hours, sixty hours a week. Work never hurt anyone.
Thank you. Young man here.
Question for Mr. Lin.
For Mr. Lin. Yes?
Uh, you spoke for unrestricted production in private enterprise. Well, uh, how did, uh, unrestricted production, under our present haphazard system of, uh, distribution, how did that affect us in, uh, nineteen twenty-nine? How did that help us?
Yes, sir.
How, how did unrestricted production help us?
Up to nineteen twenty-nine, you probably mean.
Well, it's a question of the demand of the people for things. Production is always in order to produce all the things that people want. The, uh, the limit of, uh, human endurance and that sort of thing, people do certainly, uh, want to be given decent hours of work. But as a matter of fact, as long as there are so many people wanting so many things, houses and other things, we ought not to think about reducing hours and, and reducing production below what is a, a reasonable output.
Well, I wish I had time to handle all of these questions. There's a handful, and a great many people with their hands up. Unfortunately, we can't, and, uh, if we could take all of them, we'd be here all night, and still I don't think we would have solved the problem, would we? This is one that we need to discuss as individuals here and in our homes, sitting around in our libraries, and in groups who are listening in. I hope that this conduct, discussion will be continued by all of you far into the night. And now, let's hear what, uh, Mr. Avrila has to say about next week's program.
We are gratified at your overwhelming response to our peace contest. What do you think should be the planks incorporated in the political party platforms to secure peace for the United States? Your thousand-word letter submitted to us before May first may bring you to New York as guest speaker on this topic. Judges for the contest will be Mrs. Carrie Chapman-Cat, Dr. Walter Van Kirk, executive director of the National Peace Conference, and Chancellor Harry W. Chase, chairman of the Radio Advisory Committee of the League for Political Education. And now, next week at this hour, the question will be, "Let's Face the Tax Problem." The speakers, Dr. Neil Carruthers, dean of the School of Business of Lehigh University, and John T. Flynn, economist and author. Copies of tonight's broadcasts in full, including speeches and questions, are available at the nominal cost of ten cents. Write direct to the League for Political Education, the Town Hall, one hundred and twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City. The League for Political Education, Town Hall, one hundred and twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City. Please write or print your name clearly. Reprints of all the other broadcasts on this series are also available, any ten for one dollar, or the series of thirty-one for three dollars and ten cents. (Music) "Let's Face the Tax Problem." This is the National Broadcasting Company. One moment, please.